Before we begin tonight's meeting, I'm going to read the, I'm going to read some info from our information specialists at the town. After today's power outage, our public TV channel is offline. We have contacted Cox Cable and we haven't heard back from them. We are recording the meeting as normal and it will be available for playback tomorrow on YouTube and on the normally scheduled times when the TV channel is back on the air. So we are aware that there is a recording problem this evening, and I do want to make that announcement. Now if we may, we can begin. Counselor Forrest, would you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the town, would the town clerk please take attendance?
Counselor Breton?
Here.
Counselor Forrest?
Yes.
Counselor Hurley is unable to attend tonight. Counselor Latina?
Here.
Counselor Lesser?
Here.
Counselor Rell?
Here.
Counselor Spinella?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Martino?
Here.
And Mayor Morin Bello?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have no hearings this evening, so our first order of business will be general comments. Members of the public have five minutes to speak on any matter. Please state your name and your address for the record. Yes, sir, would you like to speak?
Yes, of course.
Oh, yes, come on up, sir.
Thank you. I did not come to speak, but I don't have to worry about a problem.
There you go. Well, we're happy to have you, sir.
Thank you very much. First of all, thank everybody for their public service. I don't want to use up my five minutes' time, but we in the-
Name and address first, please.
Joseph Duffy, 27 Lincoln Road, Weathersfield, Connecticut, 06109.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not the only one who is concerned with this issue. I'm sure many, I'm sure Gary here, welcome to the town. I'm sure Gary has apprised some of you, or hopefully all of you, of the terrible situation existing up in our area from constantly intermittently barking dogs. I'm a dog lover, nothing against dogs, but I think we have now run into a quality of life issue. My neighbor was showing a house at the end of our street, and the future buyer was coming through and said, "What in the heck is that racket?" I don't know what the outcome of that transaction was, but I'm telling you that there's a quality of life issue. I'm telling you that property values will eventually be at stake, and we'd like to think that in Weathersfield, we can solve things amicably and fairly, but I honestly believe, after listening to this from April, and I'm certainly crediting Gary for his dogged work on this, from April, we are getting very, very impatient. And I'd like to hear an explanation of what has been done. I don't think the burden is on the taxpayers. We are in a government meeting here. The burden should be on the anytime Willy Wagtail up there. And it's not the dogs. The dogs are doing naturally. It is the owners that at some point have to show some reciprocation to the neighborhood. I invite any of you to come over any time of the day, up to seven o'clock at night, eight o'clock in the morning, seven-twenty is this morning, twenty minutes of seven, twenty after six, as I left now. And seeing is believing. So I respectfully request that you do something before we lose all our neighbors. And nerves are frayed. Nerves are frayed. People are sick, people have babies. It's a quality of life issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak this evening? Come on up, sir. Please state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Karen Williams, 149 Garden Street in Weathersfield. Hard to follow my good friend and neighbor here, the politician and the suave devil that he is. I actually don't know if it's the purview of the council to be handling this issue. You certainly need to be made aware of it. Or if it's planning and zoning. Planning and zoning, very simply, has dropped the ball, has not been committed to communicating with us, has not attempted to have the empathy and understanding of what the neighbor's plight is. I'm going to ask you one question right now. By raising your hand, tell me which of you would like to have 22, 23 dogs, five houses away, in your neighborhood? I don't see anybody raising their hand. We sure as hell feel that way, too. Now, I have written to every one of you. I have tried to update every one of you. I've had communications from Gary. First time I heard from him was the other day, in over two months. We have had no response, no work. So I ask, should we be addressing you, gentlemen and ladies? Should we be talking to the planning and zoning?
This is your time to speak. We don't engage in comments, but I can-
I asked you a question.
Right, and this is your five minutes to speak?
Right.
We don't engage, so you may make your comments.
Within my time, tell me whom we should be addressing.
So should he talk, this would be something that would-
We've talked with Mr. Evans, and we've gotten nowhere in five, six months.
Yeah, I mean, referred to me, it's going through a process right now.
The town council is the legislative body, and the town manager oversees the day-to-day operation of the town.
Okay.
So the town manager would be the appropriate person to speak to about this.
Would he be the decision-maker with the Planning and Zoning Commission?
He, you, go ahead. Why don't you follow up?
Sure. So just briefly, it will go through a process. That process includes the Planning and Zoning Commission. It's not a matter of whether or not they've dropped the ball. It hasn't been in front of them yet. I had explained this in a very detailed email, a number of occasions, that there's a process that it's going through.
That's not correct.
I'm not going to engage in that, but the reality is the process is that will eventually-
I have a copy of every communication. Pardon me for interrupting. You have not been communicating fairly and evenly with us.
So the process is that it will go to, it will soon be in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission. It's not there yet, but I will say that the property owner-
When did this start, Mr. Evans? When did you start getting the complaints?
Sir, we don't listen. We do not engage during public comment. If you'd like to speak, you have five minutes to speak, to have your say, and we can meet with you afterwards if you'd like, or privately, but this isn't the forum to have a back-and-forth.
Can we meet tonight after the meeting?
I am going to be here at the end of the meeting. I'd be happy to speak with you.
Will anyone else join us who's interested in being fair to the rest of us, who are good neighbors? That the quality of life issue has been changed tremendously? That this has been going on for approximately six months? April. And you know what? I wrote to you guys all the rules that are in your manual, and the proper procedures were not, there are some major questions. The proper procedures were not filed. Neighborhood was not notified. Trying to sneak this in or slide it under an existing veterinary application approval is just greedy, small-minded, and selfish. You want to make the town report look real good at the end of the year? Oh, we opened up 78 new businesses. Well, you lost 72 of them. They just replaced them. There's no new building alike going on here. Nuance, nuisance laws, again, continuous, out-of-the-ordinary, uncharacteristic noise is in violation of the nuisance law. Can I ask if everybody knows what the decibel limit is for town of Weathersfield, or is that asking a question?
This is your five minutes to speak. We don't engage with you.
Okay. Well, we need to look at that, because if you see the rules, the decibel rating has to be held at the one-foot line of the property, not out back at the railroad tracks. This owner has taken this town for a six-month ride. He has not been reciprocal. He has not been honest. He has not done, Gary, one thing that you asked him to do, that you told us he was going to do. It's an absolute sham, and you've got good homes, families, taxpayers, that we're not even being considered about what our plight is. And that's grossly unfair. Do you want 22, 23 dogs out five yards from your home?
Okay, your five minutes is up.
Is up, okay.
You have to wrap up this.
When can I meet with any or all of you? When can Joe and I meet with you? Tonight, tomorrow? You tell us what's convenient for you people, and we'll be thrilled to meet with you.
If you're here after the meeting, I will arrange a time to meet with you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Gary and I can meet with you tomorrow.
Thank you for listening.
Actually, Mayor, can I, can I sit in on that? I mean, are-
Anybody who wants to can sit in on that. We just don't want to make it a public meeting. We don't want to have to notice a public meeting, I suppose. Is there anybody else who would like to speak this evening?
Good afternoon, good evening. My name is Robert Young. I'm from 20 Copper Mill Road. I pay a lot of taxes in this town, and I'm angry as hell. My taxes went up 7% this year, this July, and when I went down to pay my tax bill, I was ripped. And I'm going to continue being ripped, because next year it's going to be just as bad, if not worse, because that extra is going to always be on my bill, and that's because of you folks, every one of you. Totally irresponsible government is what we have here. And now, you're all, most of you are running for reelection. You must have heads this big to think people would vote for you. 7% I got hit with. Dave in the newspaper, he says he got hit with 5%. And I'm sure a heck of a lot more people got hit with more, higher and lower. And here we were, in the year of revaluation. During revaluation, we normally have all that new assets coming onboard that end up reducing our mill rate, giving us a relaxation on our tax bill for one or two years. Not this year. It was flat even, and next year it's going to bounce from 40-point, whatever it is, 40.7, it's going to go to 44, if not 45. Shake your head yes or no? Couldn't care less. It'll happen, because you folks have indebted us so badly. This gentleman is talking about people not getting back to him from the town. You, Mr. Manager, I've sent you two messages, asking you questions. I've never heard a word from you. So you see, you and I have something in common. These people, unless you do a FOI on them, and now I have to do an FOI, because what I was asking for was something simple, now you're going to, now I'm going to ask for the whole caboodle. But the fact remains, this town does not respect its citizens. It doesn't even acknowledge the big heads sitting here that are swollen like this, keep raising our taxes. I'm a senior citizen. I want to retire. I can't retire if I live in this town, because my tax bill is just too high. And I'm almost 72. Why should I keep working and paying taxes? I should be getting some kind of benefit from the town where I don't pay my school taxes. That's what I should be getting, and so shouldn't all those other senior citizens who don't use it? Let the people who use the schools pay for it. Pay to play, 100%. But we see nothing, we see no change. We couldn't care less up here. As a matter of fact, we don't even have transparency in this town. We should be able to go online every day and see every check that was cut in this town to see what's being spent. I've asked this for years. It never will happen. Our politicians are keeping everything close to the vest, and they don't care about the citizens to know anything. Matter of fact, matter of fact, you know, you folks that are here tonight complaining, you were lucky. You were lucky on July 17th or 16th, 2019, Mr. Forrest, right over here, and his commission came in here and wanted to eliminate one of the speaking opportunities at the meetings. And that's exactly what him, Mr. Lesser, and Ms. Latina, who ran the commission, did. Unfortunately for them, Mr. Spinella spoke up, and he didn't like that, because people, under the rules that they were proposing, you would not have been able to speak tonight. You would have had to wait till next month. And that's how this town operates. We are in an election right now. I would recommend to everybody, not to vote for a single person sitting up here, because you're not worthy of it. You have put the screws to us citizens on a regular basis, and you have the heads this big, and you think you're going to run for another public official position where you shouldn't be. You should all resign. 7% increase in my taxes. Dave had 5%. I'm sure I wasn't the highest one. I'm sure there's more people. We're going to find out what those rates are, because I will find out.
Your time is up, if you'd finish up first.
So anyway, I also noticed that this year Tom Mazzarella is running for town council, and I really think Tom has really got it down pat.
Okay, your time is up, Mr. Young.
I'm wrapping it up, madam.
Okay, thank you.
I'm wrapping it up. I think Tom, Tom should be up on the council this November, and I believe Tom will bring new changes to this council. Maybe we'll have some transparency. Maybe we'll get some responses back from our administration, because obviously, it's not happening. Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak this evening? Gaskell Antonio, come on up.
Good evening. Gaskell Antonio, 16 Morrison Avenue. First of all, I would like to say thank you for the town manager and the town engineer that led with my wife and I two or three weeks ago regarding the, my problems on Morrison Avenue, like everybody knows. And I was pleasantly surprised that basically the town engineer agrees that there is a problem at the intersection of side distance. It was refreshing. The only thing, I didn't really like the solution, his solution, or the town manager's solution of what they proposed, or they are looking into it, is like to make Morrison Avenue between Orchard and Tifton from 24 feet to 22 feet. In other words, move the southerly curb line from where it is now two feet into the road. Now, remember, okay, I did complain about the design, the way it was, and they did move the road two feet that way, and they created a problem. And it took me four or five years at least, from somebody from the town to acknowledge that there is a problem there. So I guess last week they came in and they put a couple counts, you know, counting the speed and probably the number of cars. And of course, every time I see somebody around, you know, I'm nosy. I go there and I talk, and then. And very, very interesting, you know, the gentleman down, I guess, he had cones and he was working around. Now, cones on the street, and he was barely all done with the installation. The cones were still there, and a car went by, and he says, "Let me see if it worked." It did work. Can you imagine that with the cones there, the car was going at 34 miles per hour? The posted speed is 25. Now, can you imagine if there were no cones? I think it would have been going at 50. And yet, it's been over 10 years now. You guys are really irresponsible, not accountable, or what? How much longer is it going to take? Somebody was talking about the noise level. Keep in mind that the setback on my street, it's about 20 feet, 25 feet. That means from the street line to the houses. Hillcrest Avenue at 40, it's much noisier. And off of Morrison Avenue now. A few years ago, I did complain about the hedges on the sidewalk and the corner, or let me see, the southwest corner of Hillcrest and Orchard. There are bushes there. They're still the same. How long is it going to take before somebody's going to get a notice, or something is going to get down there? I don't understand. Three, four, five years, a decade? I'm getting older, you know? I would like to see some action from the town. Now, there is another house, you know, there is a house for sale on the corner of Tifton and Morrison Avenue. I think they just cut the grass today. But you know, on Morrison Avenue between, well, you know, Morrison Avenue itself, the grass is still three or four feet tall. What's going on? Accountability. I mean, if I don't cut the grass, like, you know, for a month in my house, somebody's going to come over and is going to tell me, "Cut the grass." Another thing, too, now, it's been a while. Silas Dean, in the northbound direction, the in lane, you know, the left lane, there are a couple dips that could be like, you know, four to six inches. Every time I go by, I have to just hug the center line, so I can miss the hole in the ground. I know, I do know that it's a state highway, but the state highway is within Weathersfield. We should call and find out what's going on. Why is there that depression? It's been already three, four, five weeks. How long is it going to take before somebody from the town sees it and cares enough to do something about it?
So give the exact location of the depression on the Silas Dean.
It's basically just south of 175 on the central, the central lane in the northbound direction. You'll see it. Once you're at an angle, you can see the hole. And, you know, my question is, how long is it going to take? It's just, you know, I don't know. Every time I think of the town and the way we behave, and I agree, the taxes we pay on a yearly basis, it's unbelievable. I live in a house, three people, and I pay the same, the same taxes on a house next door that at one point it was like, you know, nine or 10 people. You know, something has to change. I'm refusing to buy a new truck, because I don't like to pay the taxes. Thank you. Ciao.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak?
Good evening. Tom Mazzarella, 600 Walkin Hill Road. Like to talk about a vehicle purchase that's on the agenda for tonight. Who would have thought, right, Gary? So under justification, it says, "Purchasing vehicles in accordance with a replacement schedule and remove vehicles that are past their life cycle. Impact, if not approved, the aging vehicles become increasingly expensive to maintain and are not in service due to repairs." Department head comments, "The new vehicles purchased will replace aging models. Maintenance would continue to grow, and vehicles would spend more time getting repaired versus being on the road." I question the validity of most of what I just read. If we go back to my, one of my favorite subjects, the vehicle lift, back in 2017 in July, we were told by the department head that the vehicle lift was not in service, that we had mechanics, five mechanics, that couldn't do the work, and if we were to spend $180,000, we would be able to bring back the majority of the work that is being sent to other outside repair agencies. At the time, Counselor Hemmard asked to see the data that supported the costs involved of sending all those vehicles out for repair. Deputy Mayor Berry asked the same thing. How much are we spending on maintenance in the past year? I asked before the meeting and at the end of the meeting. We didn't receive an answer. The issue got tabled for about a year and a half. In January 19, it came back on the agenda. Again, Counselor Forrest asked about the costs of sending trucks out for maintenance. We didn't get an answer. I asked at the beginning of the meeting, I asked at the end of the meeting. Never got an answer. The vehicle lift got approved. We spent $180,000 or so dollars, the lifts installed, I believe, and operational. Great. Still never got an answer. So on March 7, I submitted an FOI request to the town, to the brand-new town manager. Unfortunately, that was probably his first week working there, and didn't really have a lot of knowledge about what went on, but I tried to give him warning, and he worked on it for a while. We found out that there is no system to account for the costs of the vehicle maintenance. I was given six pages of check numbers and amounts, dollar amounts, that didn't tell me anything about whether it was a truck repair, what truck, et cetera. The town manager sent me a nice letter, and he said that the information I requested would require almost a forensic level of accounting to review each and every invoice and all the backup detail. I said, "Okay, when can we start?" And we got into the budget season, and it kind of got tabled as a priority. I understand that. And Mr. O'Neill was able to scan all the relevant documents, provided those to me in an effort to reduce some of the workload. I confined it to the year prior to the initial submission for the lift. I finished my review. We sent two trucks out in that 12-month period, two. We spent $514 fixing a truck that had a problem with a check engine light. Probably all of you've had that happen with your cars. You have to bring it to the garage, they figure it out, they fix it. Evidently, we couldn't figure it out at our garage, so we sent it out. $514. The second vehicle we sent out was for 1,200. It was for an annual inspection of one of the fire apparatus, and it was under a service contract. So we spent a total of $1,700 of outside vendor work, because we didn't have a vehicle lift. So we spent $180,000 so that we could bring $1,714 worth of work back into the town. Makes no sense whatsoever. I'll finish up later. I hope you'll consider where the data's coming from and table this matter until you get all the answers of how much it actually costs to maintain a vehicle and why it's stated that it's going to exceed, that we're going to be, maintenance costs are going to continue to grow, and we're going to spend more time with the truck off the road than on the road. I don't believe the data exists, and therefore, we shouldn't buy the truck. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mazzarella. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak this evening? Is there anybody else who'd like to speak this evening? Okay, seeing no one, I will declare public comment closed. And we will move into council reports. Counselors, does anyone have a report for this evening? Counselor Forrest?
Thanks, Mayor. Briefly, redevelopment committee, redevelopment committee met and is basically looking at four major areas of redevelopment in town, not necessarily for the area part, but they're looking at a blight ordinance and improving the blight ordinance, so that it might be, have a little bit more teeth for maybe some of the areas, especially the commercial areas that may not look so nice and may be forming a blight. Looking at streamlining the review process for bigger projects, so, you know, someone that's coming in here, wanting to do development, can have a nice streamlined process and get through our boards and commissions in an appropriate way, be, and continue to improve our business-friendly atmosphere. Also, looking at some various incentives for developer, developers, and also going out, doing business visits and meeting with landowners, in order to see which landowners are interested in possibly even either moving their property or building that good personal relationship, which is important for the development of the town, and having, getting a comfort level about doing business in this town and increasing our development and our quality of life. And that's a quick report. There's a, that was a two-hour meeting or so, but that's a quick report from the redevelopment agency.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Deputy Mayor?
EDIC, excuse me, EDIC met before redevelopment. And we went through the list and status of all the empty buildings. The developer came in and talked to us about the hamburger restaurant he's going to be putting up on Maple Street and where things stood on that. And we got, like I said, we got an updated status on all the open projects in town. And then, after both meetings were completed, there was a tour at Mediplex. The owner opened up the building and showed us the condition inside, and it's in real bad shape. I don't think it can personally be rehabilitated. I think it's going to have to come down. I mean, the roof's leaking, water's coming in, the mold is starting, so it's going to be an interesting project for whatever developer takes it over.
Okay, anything else? Any other councilors? Okay, seeing none, we'll move into council comments. Are there any council members who have comments this evening? Councilor Rell?
No, I just concur with the two gentlemen who live over by the Garden Street in old Weathersfield. I too have been, as much of you all have been, on the email chains for what's gone on down at the new dog boarding facility on Beaverbrook. I just had a couple questions, and I know, you know, we'll have further time to discuss it, and hopefully, we could get Peter Gillespie in, if that meeting is going to occur tomorrow, to be able to get some of these questions answered. One question I did have was, was there consideration from going from a veterinary hospital, which was there before, to a doggy daycare facility? Was there any consideration of what the difference would be? Or did P&amp;Z at the time think that it was just simply one business replacing another business? And I know that's not, you know, part of the council comments, but, you know, I'd like to get that cleared up tonight for at least these two gentlemen and anybody else who's listening, prior to any meetings that might occur.
Sure.
Okay. So, the quick answer, or the quick explanation is this, there's multiple ways to go through this type of approval. There's an administrative process as well, so, or there's an administrative approval process, and then there's a committee or commission process. In this particular case, because the zoning ordinance allows for similar uses, same or similar uses, backing up, so, the zoning regs allow, put veterinarians and veterinary clinics and kennels in the same category, so therefore, it doesn't have to go through a planning and zoning process, it just needs an administrative approval. Based off of the application that was put in, it was a like-for-like use, and therefore, the requirements and special permits go with the land, not with the business. So, one business left, the other one came in, they met the same requirements under the zoning regs, and therefore, it never went to planning and zoning. Right now, we're in a process, as we're evaluating and working with the property owner, to potentially, as, again, going through the process, to get in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission. But, we can't just jump in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission, it has to be a referral. The referral has to come from a number of methods, but in this case, through the zoning enforcement officer. Zoning enforcement officer, myself, Peter Gillespie, Building Department, and the Fire Marshal's Office have all been out on site, and we've been tracking this over the last several months. And so, we're getting to that process at this time. The business owner has been responsive and helpful, perhaps not moving as quickly as the neighborhood would like, but, again, that, it never went in front of planning and zoning. It wasn't per our own regulation and approved by the state, it didn't need to go based off of the application. Whether or not things changed along the way that would require or trigger it to go to planning and zoning is a question that the zoning enforcement officer is going to determine.
Has a zoning enforcement officer determined any decibel levels, or has there been meters out there? Have there been, you know, I know from some of your comments, you've been on-site or in the neighborhoods at early morning hours, you mean?
Yep. So, I've been out there, and the police have been out there to do the measurement, and in which case, the decibel level based off of the butter is, cannot exceed 55 decibels, and it doesn't exceed 55 decibels.
Okay.
So, you know, we're, right now, we are working through the process, as I said, to try to balance the needs of the residents with the needs of the business in the area, and we're hoping that we can find a common ground that will be suitable.
Now, is there any, is there any action, or lack of action, that the property owner cannot take? I mean, can he just simply say, "Hey, you know, I've been approved by P&amp;Z, the town has allowed for my business to be here, and, you know, I'm not violating any ordinances, I'm not violating any noise restrictions, I have a like-for-like business with what was there currently." I mean, is there a recourse that the town can take at that point, that that business owner says, you know, "Listen, guys, I'm complying with everything that you presented to me when I, you know, applied X number of months ago or a year and a half ago?"
Yeah, there, there, again, it's the process, and sometimes, government gets tied up in red tape, but it's fair to protect both sides. So, the reality is that town manager, town council, don't have the authority at this point because it's an approved permit, so it has to get in front of the zoning, well, in this case, will go in front of planning and zoning, which will come through the zoning enforcement officer. So, we'll work through an action if there's an actionable item that shows that they violated the restrictions of their administrative approval. And if they have, that would bring it in front of planning and zoning, and that's what we're working towards right now.
Is that the goal that we're looking for? Or is the goal maybe, let's say, to the property owner, "Why don't you take steps on your own to mitigate some of this, you know, noise levels, be it, you know, change of hours, screening, you know?"
Yeah, they, and just, they've had a number of businesses come in to actually give them quotes as to ways they could possibly absorb some of the sound and reduce the sound. In most cases, they've said there's no guarantee, the businesses, vendors coming in are saying there's no guarantee. So, the last conversation was, we directed them and gave them a list of acoustical engineers for them to pick from. They interviewed three of them. They've picked one. I don't know the date offhand as to when they're coming out, but they're going to judge to determine whether or not it's a redirect, if it's bouncing off of the, it's a brick facade, so is it redirecting, bouncing off the facade and traveling across, if there's something that they can put in place to absorb the sound. So, it's kind of a dual track. We're trying to be considerate of the residents, the businesses, the business, and the understanding that the cost for some of these potential buffers is in the tens of thousands of dollars, which makes their business plan unfeasible. So, the reality is, we want to give them the opportunity, as I would to any resident, the opportunity to cure whatever the deficiency is. Doesn't mean we can't, at the same time, follow the administrative process on our end to make sure they reach compliance.
To your latter point, I do hope that the town does follow through on that compliance part, and that, you know, we stay on top of, you know, any violations that may be occurring, or maybe even look to change some of, you know, unfortunately, use this as a model to change some of what we approve and how we approve it for businesses coming into the town.
No, I can say that it, that is already in process.
Thank you.
Any other council members have comments? Deputy Mayor?
A couple weeks back, I want to commend our Public Safety Department, our Park and Rec Department. A couple weeks back, they had the National Night Out. They moved it from Millwoods up to the community center. It was a nicer facility, a lot more stuff was there. Councilor Rell was there, Councilor Spinella, Hurley, and myself. I don't know if you want to jump in with some comments afterwards, but they had a real nice show there. They had the canine dog there fenced in, and he did some demonstrating there, you know, with the dog. Starbucks was there offering free iced coffee and hot coffee to, you know, people who wanted it. The nature center had some of their animals caged in that the kids could go up and play with. Fire department had their smokehouse and stuff that they could, the kids could go through, the fire trucks and a bunch of other stuff there. So, they did a real super job this year, and they should all be commended for the great job they did.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, I have a couple comments. I have a mayor's hour this Thursday from 5:00 to 6:00. If residents would like to come in and speak to me one-on-one, I will be available in the town manager's conference room, again, this Thursday from 5:00 to 6:00. I'd also like to wish all of our school students, I know they're all moaning and groaning, school starts August 29th, so wish them all a successful year. And finally, the town did close on Keisha Farm. And again, again, my comments are that this is the last upland parcel of farmland in our community, 32 acres of land, and the voters voted to purchase the farm by over 1,000 votes. The town closed on it in the beginning of August. We only had about 9% open space in Weathersfield, which is a much lower percentage than most of our surrounding communities. So, now, we will begin the process for planning on the farm. The town manager has asked for people to submit their names if they would like to be considered for the committee, and now, he has the unenviable job of going through the several names that he's received to try to call that group down to nine members. So, those are my comments for this evening. Next, we have town manager's report.
So, that's a great segue, because the first component I was going to talk about were the three committees that I made an announcement for. We were looking for volunteers. That came out in end of July, beginning of August. One for Keisha Farms, to create an ad hoc committee to go through a process for Keisha Farms, and another to determine the use of funds for the Heart Fair Foundation for Public Giving. We've been approved for up to $100,000, but for specific, there's specific requirements related to it. Part of those requirements would to be form, it's really two committees, but we're calling it one to get the names together. A committee to create, a selection committee to determine who would serve on, an advisory committee to determine how those funds could be used. So, that hit the paper and Facebook and the town website in end of July, beginning of August, and we received a total of 55 names of individuals who were interested, as well as a mix of resumes or just statements as to why they would fit within the commission. You mentioned several names, I think 40 plus or minus were just for Keisha Farms. So, there's a lot of interest in the committee, and I'm going through a process to kind of balance off the committee. We're thinking somewhere between seven to nine names. Once I'm able to get through those names and have conversations with individuals, my intent is to forward those names to a council meeting to make an announcement so that it can be public. Again, the intent is to make this as public a process as possible, to get the information out to the residents, to allow the residents an opportunity to provide feedback, and then for the committee to provide a recommendation to me to provide to the council. And the goal to announce those names for both committees would be, I'm going to say, at some point in September, one of the meetings in September is the target. Council Forrest, as you mentioned, members of the RDA, the town planner, Peter Gillespie, as well as myself, have been working on a multifaceted approach to stimulate growth in the community. As part of that approach, we're looking at a number of things, a number of ordinances within town and how they function, one of them being the blight ordinance. While it's, it's a well-written document, the reality is, there's been a lot of change at the state level as to how much flexibility a municipal blight ordinance can have. It actually, the state, about three years ago, really allowed municipalities to have some teeth in enforcing their blight ordinance. And so, what the RDA is working through, our zoning enforcement and blight enforcement officer, Charles Morrison, as well as Peter Gillespie, myself, are with the RDA, working on a draft as how we can address both blight in commercial properties and blight in residential properties. And I know one member happened to mention an issue that's going on or has been going on in their neighborhood. So, to date, we've had some enforcement ability. At the end of the day, the way our ordinance is written, we're very limited as to how strong our enforcement can be. So, we're really looking to revise that, to encourage compliance. And then, a couple, just quick notes on development. I'm pleased to announce that the development at 275 Ridge Road, which is a residential development, has achieved 100% occupancy, which, based off of just market trends, that kind of gives me feedback that we're not at a saturation point within the market, which means we have some ability to capture existing growth, which works out well, because the second component I wanted to mention is the Borden, is slated to have its first model open available sometime early fall, we're hoping September. And that's about it.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Does the town clerk have any communications?
I do. There's going to be a Democratic town primary on September 10th from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. We have, all polling places are going to be open. Absentee ballots are available from my office starting tomorrow. All of them will, and all return ballots will be counted at the central location in Town Hall on election night. We have seven candidates running, and you can vote for any six of them. And you have to be registered in the party to vote in the Democratic primary.
Okay, thank you.
And I have 1,500, I have about 1,585 dogs registered.
Not to vote.
Came on them Friday before the dogs went specifically for women.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, so, next is council action. We have acceptance of a resignation. I do believe we have a resignation. We have a motion?
A motion to, for one resignation from the Weathersfield Advisory Committee for People with Disabilities. Joan Haynes, 516 Highland Street, from 7:119 to 6:3021.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, are there any questions or comments?
I just want to make a quick comment. She has given 35 years of her life in the town of Weathersfield to volunteer, and she does such a wonderful job. Her heart is truly in that committee. It's a major loss for the town, and she is to be commended. Joan does a wonderful job, so thank her very much if you bump into her in the grocery store.
Thank you, Councilwoman Tina. All in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you. I don't believe we have any appointments to boards and commissions, and we do not have any ordinances or resolutions for action. We have no matters of unfinished business. So, that brings us to other business, budget reconciliation and transfers. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the fiscal year 2019 budget transfers.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Town manager, would you like to begin the remarks?
Sure, I'll do a quick intro. Thank you, Mayor. Per Section 709 of the Town of Weathersfield Charter, I hereby submit the 2018-19 end-of-year transfer recommendations to the council. Recommendations are to make departments whole and overall reflect the strategy to reinvest unencumbered funds into town infrastructure. Town Finance Director Michael O'Neil, as well as myself, we are here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Thank you for being here.
Good evening, Mike O'Neil, Director of Finance. I thought perhaps I would speak from, it's the fourth page in your agenda packet, and actually, there was a slightly revised version of this report that was just hopefully distributed to you, has a couple of yellow highlights on it.
Yes, we did receive it at our places, and you make my eyes work with this small font.
I apologize.
I have a pair in my purse.
We're trying to save paper.
11 by 17 is very expensive.
Okay. Do you have, do you want to go through this, or you, or would you?
I will try to be brief and certainly answer any questions that you have. So, the purpose of this exercise is to take unexpended appropriations and transfer that budget authority such that the funding can be moved to non-lapsing funds. So, for that purpose, and also, we have four departments that have exceeded their budget, and so, there needs to be, in conjunction with that, just a, a transfer from the contingency account to cover that. So, let me first, I've labeled a couple of the columns on the spreadsheet with those very small numbers that have circles around them. So, column labeled one is what remains unexpended by department or over-expended. The total there is, for all departments, is $788,814. The total there is, for all departments, is seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars. There are four departments that were over-budget. The town attorney was over-budget by fifty thousand and change. That's due simply to legal matters and legal costs in excess of the amount budgeted. That amount, that budgeted amount has remained the same for a number of years. Next department is the tax assessor, over by fifteen thousand dollars and change. That is due, you may recall, to, a firm was retained to perform personal property audits. That firm worked on a strict contingency basis, which means they were only paid to the extent that they found property to be assessed. What we had to do was record the cost of those audits in the department and the revenue separately, on the revenue side of the budget. The fees were about twenty thousand, if I recall, twenty, twenty-two thousand. The revenue related with the property that was discovered was more than that. So it was a net gain for the town, but again, the expense shows up in the assessor's office that was not budgeted for. There has been a provision included in the fiscal twenty budget for those audits, as they will continue. The fire department was over by thirty-four thousand, almost thirty-five thousand dollars. That was due primarily to the hydrant fees paid to the MDC. The timing of that bill was changed by the MDC. It was, had been billed at the end of the year, and it's now being billed in the beginning of the year. So we effectively, in addition to a twenty-five percent increase in those fees, we paid two years' worth. We only budgeted one year's worth of hydrant fees, but we had to pay for two years' worth of those to sort of get ourselves on the billing cycle of, the new billing cycle for the MDC. So that's why that was over. And then lastly, physical services was over by a hundred and two thousand. That was due to overtime related to storms. And the increase during the year in the fees for MIRA, which is where we take our trash, and they had, you may recall, some problems at that facility that caused a shutdown for a number of weeks or months. And costs related to that were passed on to the towns.
Okay, do council members have questions for finance director? Deputy Mayor?
Mike, just one question for you. One of the departments on here is one that we have no control over, in that they tell us what they're charging, and that's the probate court. And I see they came in under budget. I'm just wondering why, because normally, you know, whatever they submit is what they end up taking. So how did we end up at almost, you know, nine thousand dollars back this year?
I know that we, the timing of when they give us their number and when we do our budget is, you know, at the same time of the year. I believe they were negotiating a lease at the time that we were preparing the nineteen budget. I'm going to guess, based on that very round thirty-four thousand dollars, that we had to just make an estimate, and that's why. So they build us what they, you know, their actual costs. We had a little extra in there because there was some unknown at the time.
Thank you.
Councilor Lester?
Thank you, Mayor. Mike, I wanted to ask you about the radio reserve. It looks like they are one of the largest recipients, if not the largest recipient, of the transfers. Can you kind of describe how that works, in terms of the radio reserve, and give us some more content around that?
Sure. So let me just, so I said there's sort of two, two things we want to accomplish. One is covering those overages, those four departments that I explained. And then the remainder of those funds, what we do is, so it's seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. We like to leave a little bit, fifteen thousand dollars in the event that there's changes during the audit. So that leaves us with seven hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. We've put together proposed transfers to really four areas. The capital non-recurring expenditure fund, about five hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. The compensated absences fund, about eighty-one thousand dollars. CIP fund, about eighty-four thousand dollars. And then seventeen thousand dollars related to the acquisition of the Keisha property, just to cover some unexpected costs related to the acquisition. So, and now to answer your question within that, we are proposing a transfer of two hundred thousand dollars to the radio reserve as part of the CNEF fund, transfers to that fund. That is a, typically what we've done in past years is taking the unexpended money from public, public safety departments and put it in there. What we have used that for in recent years is to offset lease payments, the lease payment on the radio system. We're paying for that under a ten-year lease. So what has been proposed here, what I, my office proposed, was to replace the money that we used in the fiscal twenty budget. So in the fiscal twenty budget, we took two hundred thousand out of the radio reserve to help offset the lease payments. This proposes to just replenish that, put it back there for the twenty-one budget, presumably, or any other needs.
And how much is still owed? Do we know?
Let me guess, in round figures, I believe it was a three-point-six million dollar lease, and we are probably a little over halfway through that. I'd have to get you.
Just, and do you recall what, what year? Does that go back a fair ways?
The lease?
Yeah.
I think about five years. We're probably a little bit past halfway. That was right, I remember it was right about the time that I, I came to the town.
Okay, and you think we're about halfway through?
Yeah, a little, I would say we're probably, you know, maybe year six if I had to guess. I can get the information for you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mike.
Okay, any other questions? Councilor Forrest?
Thanks, Mayor. Mike, I noticed the fund balance, twelve point one seven. What was, do you remember what it was ending fiscal year last year? If it's up or down? I thought I remembered it in the elevens, but I don't want to.
You're, I think you're right. It was, it was under twelve.
Right. That's, that's really, it's a, it's a good, strong fund balance. And I'm wondering if there's, if we're above twelve, and even like significantly above twelve at twelve point one seven, if we're able to look at some of our bonding and our debt, you know, and our credit ratings and so on, and to be able to play up this strong financial picture with them in order to lower some of our debt service.
Yeah, it is, fund balance is one of the main things that the rating agencies look to.
Right, which we talked about.
And they, yes, and they never are seemingly satisfied with how much we have. They always like to see more, but again, it's, I think what, what they do look at is the trend. And you know, they like to see that we are maintaining that, that we're adhering to our policy.
Is that a dialogue that you think we can open up now that we're significantly above twelve? Or reopen that dialogue to see if that's something that we can talk to them about? As we get rated for our bonding agency, and if we should look at maybe even some type of a refinance as we move forward?
Yes, yeah, we're always in communication with our financial advisor about opportunities to refinance. You know, we're, we're obviously with the closing of the, the acquisition of the Keisha property. You know, that was, that was approved for financing at referendum, so we'll be working on that very soon.
So it probably won't get solved, obviously, right at this time right now, but maybe through you, Mr. Town Manager, we could just start that dialogue to see if these, the numbers that we're seeing right now as we close our books for the previous fiscal year might be able to give us some leverage as we move forward with the next couple of fiscal years as it relates to indebtedness. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Just one comment.
Okay.
Do we have the numbers, Mike, from last year, what we, what our fund balance, well, not fund balance, but the overages for last year?
I have them up here, and again, in round figures. Actually, I wrote them down a little earlier because I knew you would ask. We had, so for the fiscal eighteen budget, there was two million dollars unexpended. Eight hundred of that had been, if you recall, in, so in, it was with the whole state budget
Yeah.
sort of delays and all of that.
We had allocated.
To ECS. You, in February of eighteen, approved what we were calling a deficit mitigation plan, where we all agreed we were going to be short on revenues. The board agreed to keep their spending downtown as well. That was eight hundred thousand. So start with two million unexpended, subtract that eight hundred thousand dollars that we planned because we were short on the revenue side. So we worked, at this time last year, we were working with about a million, two, a million two.
Okay. My only comment would be, you know, while I like the idea of going to the body agencies with the twelve percent, you know, budget reserve, we're also looking at two point, one point two million last year, close to eight hundred thousand this year. So overage for the last two years of about two million dollars. You know, it would be good to go to the body agencies and say how good we're doing, but I would also like to go back to the taxpayers and say, you know, we budgeted for two more million dollars than what we actually spent. And what we're doing is we're giving it and we're putting it back. While I do like to see some of the reserves, you know, as, you know, Councilman Lesser was saying, for the radio reserve to pay down some of that debt. I do like the idea of paying off the vehicles upfront rather than leasing. I will probably have comments on those two trucks later on. But a lot of this is going into reserves that maybe we should allocate some additional funding so that costs going forward, even more so than what we are doing right now, will help offset some of the additional burdens on taxpayers going forward. I mean, I'm preaching to you, but, you know, I'm talking to the whole council as well. Thanks, Mayor.
Understood, sure. You're welcome.
Deputy Mayor, did you have a comment?
I just wanted to make a comment. Part of that, Mike, that overage that we have this year is due to the fact, if you check out the revenues side of the house, we had a very good year in building permits. We budgeted three seventy-five, which is about the normal. And we brought in, was it like six seventy or something like that, Mike? You know, part of it was due to the board and other stuff. But you can't project some of that stuff until I, you know, start to dig in the ground before you can add it in. You can't project something's going to happen because it's going to be delayed. So there's, you know, almost four hundred thousand dollars in revenue that came in that we weren't expecting or projecting that makes up part of that overage.
Any other comments? Okay, I just asked that the town clerk, please make sure that the final budget transfer table is in our minutes because we didn't read all of the numbers into the record with the motion. So if you could just make sure that does appear in the minutes.
Just one more comment. The change that I made to this today simply reflects the library's recommendation. The library board met on Thursday night. This was prepared Thursday afternoon, so, or Wednesday afternoon, rather. Very minor, about a sixty-six hundred dollar change, but it just, it simply reflects what the library board recommended for the transfers related to the surplus in the, in the library line.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? All right, we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Any abstentions? Motion carries. Delores, did you get that vote?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have a bid, purchase of physical services and fire marshal pickup truck as approved in the fiscal year nineteen twenty budget. Do we have a motion?
Take a motion to purchase two trucks in accordance with the replacement schedule and need, and remove said vehicles that are past a reasonable life cycle.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Town manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The purchase of these vehicles was approved as part of the twenty nineteen twenty budget process under the category as leased vehicles. Due to the availability of unencumbered funds associated with the year-end transfers, I'm recommending that we pay these vehicles upfront versus financing them over a period of time. Physical Services Director Sally Katz, as well as myself, are here to answer any questions that you may have about the purchase.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have any initial comments before we go into questions?
Yes, I would, actually. There are, there are a few things I'd like to, to make comment on, specifically on the truck that would be used in physical services. The truck that we are wanting to replace the new vehicle with is currently twelve years old. When I came to the town, we were to be on a replacement schedule of every ten years with our vehicles. This vehicle is two years past its replacement schedule, so it is currently twelve years old. This truck is in service five days of the week, every day of the year that we work. Primarily from April through November, it is used to haul a trailer, which carries a riding mower, standing mower, and other equipment that is used for landscaping and mowing purposes. In the winter, it is used for snow plowing. It is used at these schools and on the smaller cul-de-sacs. During the winter, it is equipped with a plow, obviously because it does plowing. The two, this truck, which is a two thousand and seven, has approximately currently forty-one thousand miles on it. They are all city miles. It's not highway miles. These are all stop-and-start types of miles. The truck has approximately twelve thousand, five hundred hours. That would be straight hours, but we also know that there are weeks where this truck has been in service almost constantly as we have battled storms. So I would approximate that there would be, during the snow months, an approximate another five thousand hours in total. So there's somewhere in the range of seventeen thousand hours on the road for this vehicle. During the non-snow months, as I, as I said, the truck is equipped with a trailer that brings equipment that's used on alternate weeks. On week one, it is used throughout that week to bring equipment to fifty-five different areas throughout town. Everything from islands, the green parks, open spaces. On the second week, that truck brings equipment, and we use it for landscaping, things to do at twenty-two town buildings. And then it rotates again back to the week where it, it has the fifty-five areas where it mows. So it's stopping and starting, stopping and starting on those, on that rotation. Unfortunately, due to its use during the snow, it also has experienced a significant amount of corrosive salt to it. The truck, even though it is washed after every plow, every plowing experience, it has holes that have rotted through the driver's and passenger sides of the floor. Corrosion has worn in the drive shaft. There is, one of the differentials has, has been corrosive, and it has a leak which cannot be fixed. The differential would have to be replaced. And there is corrosion through the heat shield. I do have photos, if anyone would like to see. The question was, this truck is a four-wheel-drive truck that we are requesting, and we went to the state bid process to get the lowest possible price on this vehicle.
Okay, are there any council questions or comments? Deputy Mayor?
I have one. It's not on that particular truck. It's on the fire marshal's vehicle. When you came to us during the budget process for this, it was my understanding that when his truck was replaced, because he needed something to carry more stuff in, his current vehicle was going to be assigned to the custodial supervisor. And now if I read this letter from, it's looking to have it go to replace a fire department excursion. And I'm just wondering why the change?
So if I may, Deputy Mayor, that was Anthony Dignati, who's the fire marshal at the time, when he originally in February produced his budget request. That was the intent, and then by the time we got to actually budget negotiations and a conversation with Sally about need within, total need within the department and within the organization, it was determined that greatest and best use was actually to recycle it to the, I can't remember the title.
The custodial manager.
Custodial supervisor.
So we'll be going there instead.
Yep, yep.
Okay, I just want to make sure my notes are right from when we went to the budget process.
Yes, as, as his job, the custodial manager's job, just to remind people, literally is to go from school to school to school every day. And so a vehicle, a town vehicle, is important to him and to do the work that he does in addition to bringing equipment from school to school to utilize it to our best extent.
I just wanted to make sure because I know that would help me accept purchasing it.
Understood.
And I just wanted to make sure that was going to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Councilor Lesser?
No, no, I'm pointing to Matt with raises.
No, no, I'm pointing to Matt with raises.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Councilor Forrest?
No, no, I was pointing to Amy that you were-
That I was raising my hand? Thanks. Sally, I feel like there's this, always this balance, right, in between, clearly the use case for this truck is a, is a heavy one, plowing, salt, the whole bit. But then, of course, the, maybe the way the motion happens to be phrased, which is just wording, is in terms of useful life and versus, which is more of almost like an accounting term rather than a on-the-ground, an on-the-ground term, right? It's not, it's like this truck is not working, this truck is in the shop, this truck is unmanageable anymore for the regular day-to-day operations of the town of Weathersfield. That's sort of more of that needs-based decision that I think, at least I'm not struggling with, but have to consider making like the purchase decision, like we all would, is the car in that bad of shape. I see some of the stuff here that's pointing out some of the rust in some of the areas, and although I'm not pretending to be a mechanic of any kind, I do change my own brakes and stuff like that, so some of that is, you can obviously see rust on a rotor, like you can fix a rotor, right? And there's that plate that's behind the rotor, I forgot what the name of it is, it's sort of like a replaceable part. Others, floors, for example, are a little bit more heavy-duty. So I'm trying to get a feel for, we understand the use cases is, is strong on this particular vehicle, but what's the needs case for this particular vehicle? Can you help me wrap my mind around that and not useful life, but has it been out of commission a lot? You know, that, that's usually the sort of unreliability of the particular versus, there's some rust on it, of course there's some rust on it. There's some rust on my car.
There's, to kind of help you out, there's more than just rust on it, and it has been out of commission, the heat shield damage, the differential damage, the damage to the, to the brake system, not just the rotors, and I agree sometimes with the language is, is not a one-for-one swap on it. The vehicle hasn't been in, it hasn't been in commission especially because it's, to work through those problems, it was unreliable, and so we have not been using it very much at all, really, because we do have a significant issue with multiple safety features of that vehicle, including the heat shield, including the brakes, the braking system. And so knowing that that vehicle is, has a significant amount of hours on it, a significant amount of, again, town miles on it, it is one which, it's just how much money do you, how much money and time do you continue to put into a vehicle and not get the return from it? And so we have been using it. I'm not saying that it's, you know, been mothballed.
Yeah.
But it is unreliable. There are significant issues with it, and I'm sure that when you drive your car, if you find something that isn't working properly, you know, you, you try to fix it immediately so that it makes the ride reliable. I'm not saying the ride itself, but the, the use of the vehicle.
What is our, you're the expert in physical services and understanding these life cycles and usability. So how do you make that balance between, hey, I think that this truck is gonna have to go in or needs $4,000 of repairs or some number versus the purchase? What is, there must be some sort of general principles that you use as far as the guideline?
There's lot, there's lots of things that go into making this type of request. Number one is you do look at a replacement schedule where you start to have a lot of repairs, and then we take a look at what the costs of these vehicles are. What's the cost of it being off the road in time, in activities that are not going to happen? What are the cost time, what are the costs of replacement parts? Vehicles that are more than five years old, our times are very difficult to get parts for. Yes, we can get them, but they're not readily available many times. In Connecticut, we're buying them from dealers, you know, in Texas or in California, we can get them, but we are then costing us for shipping and time. And we also take a look at how often are we using these vehicles and what activities are happening when we use these vehicles? We don't have a surplus of vehicles. We have vehicles that are always being used. It's not as if I can say, okay, well, this one is not being used, so I still need to mow these 55 places, I'll just grab the keys to another vehicle and we'll go and do our work. We don't have that opportunity. So there's no downtime for the vehicles and the fleet, and in order to do the work that needs to get done, landscaping, plowing, I've gotta get my people to where the work is. And so that's one of the factors that goes into, you know, the, the request for a purchase, and also to make sure that we do keep a more modern fleet because the trucks now are more durable than in previous years. They are, I, I, I'll go back, I'll use my word of durable.
So is the anticipation that this truck, if the useful life of the previous one was 10 years, you said, is this truck 12? Is it with durability?
Again, we will continue to do it. We would, you know, you can, you can, you could, there are many factors that go into a, a useful life, as we just said, so our hope would be that it would be 12 years, maybe longer because of the way that cars are being built more. Now there's more, they're more solid in a, in a lot of ways, and less moving parts, we'll say, to it, and so that is certainly the hope. It's what we go for. It's why we have our own mechanics maintaining these vehicles. We maintain, you know, there are certain vehicles that, that we can, that do last. This one, again, was purchased in 2007, and it is certainly our hope. I think also, as we do better when it comes to salt and the amount of salt that we use, and the, the types of snow treatments that are out there that are less corrosive, that we would also hopefully get more time out of our vehicles without them having been on salted roads.
So, in my understanding, taking all these factors into consideration, it would be your anticipation, have we keep this vehicle, that the reliability would not be good and it would be off for a certain amount of time?
I wish I had a crystal ball, but yes. I mean, based on, based on what I've seen so far and had seen its unreliability, it's like anyone who's driving an, an old car that is kind of a clunker, you're just never sure. Yeah, it's possible that you're going to get to where you need to go every single day, but it's also possible that you don't get out of your driveway.
But you're anticipating that there's gonna be an issue with this car?
I'm absolutely anticipating that there's gonna be an issue, that there's issues with it now, so if we keep this truck in service, I am looking at completely changing out the braking system, a differential, and whatever else the diagnosticians tell me is wrong with the vehicle.
Thank you for your time and your expertise.
Councilor Lesser?
Thank you, Mayor. Real quick, Sally, can you remind us, do we recover any costs when we replace the vehicles? The vehicle that we're no longer, can we sell the vehicle? Do we? Do we recover some costs from parts? Is there some?
We take them to auction.
Okay.
And then whatever gets sold at auction goes back into the general fund.
So this vehicle, if we vote to replace, will go to auction?
Yes, it will.
Some of the money will come back to the town?
Yes, it will.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilor Rell?
I just do, I have a couple of follow-ups, just from conversations that I've heard. This vehicle or this truck's coming from a state contracting bid, lowest bid?
There are multiple dealers on the state bid, yes.
So Councilman Forrest had asked about, you know, you know, what are we getting out of this truck compared to what we got out of the 2007 truck? You know, why did that only last 12 years and 41,000 miles? You know, we may not be, are we paying for top-notch undercoating on it? I mean, do, because it's the lowest bid on a state contract or a state vendor's bid, are we getting, you know, like for like? Are we getting, are we gonna get, you know, bottom-of-the-barrel stuff like we possibly had gotten in 2007? Or are we gonna get something that's got, you know, anti-corrosive undercarriage spray, sealed UV joints or, you know, differentials? What are we getting now that we might not have received when we purchased the 2007?
The trucks that are, we are not buying kind of the, the cheapest model or the most eco, I don't know, how am I, how do I say this? Just because it's on a state bid doesn't mean that we're taking someone's sloppy seconds. These are Ford trucks. They are first quality. They are new, and they are as if you would be able to purchase them retail. We are just fortunate enough that the dealers competitively bid with the state, and so we get the advantage of that bidding and pricing package.
Okay.
One of the things that we will always fight, whether it's 2007 or 2019, is the corrosive nature of the salt that we use on our roads. But in order for us to be able to do de-icing in snow and streets, we use salt. And we even have a wash bay where every vehicle is washed, sometimes two times during an active storm, in order to get the corrosive salt off of it, but it doesn't make it go away 100%.
Right.
And so, you know, that's the kind of thing, it is, it is the salt that does a lot of the corrosion. The other thing is this vehicle is used, it's not only on the roads, we're taking it on fields, we're taking it, you know, onto the green, you're in uneven structures, you're in rutted, you're in the meadows, you're in places where it's not just in the streets, and yes, it also is in the streets, and I understand there are potholes in the streets at times. And so, again, you know, it's the wear and tear on a vehicle, and I would express that 12 years out of a vehicle is not a short amount of time, the way that, the way that these vehicles are used, which is probably more often than other people's, you know, vehicles, and because of the fact that we use our vehicles 12 months out of the year, whereas other towns or other facilities are able to switch off trucks based on the activities during the year.
And the town manager's gonna speak on the fire marshal's vehicle?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Just quickly, because Fire Marshal Dignati couldn't make it this evening, as was mentioned during the budget process, his request has a lot to do with both safety and functionality of the vehicle. As the fire marshal and also a responder to fire, calls for fire service, he is constantly in and out, he's wearing his turnout gear, he's inspecting, so a lot of times with fires, he's bringing in all of the chemicals, that he's wearing a respirator to avoid inhaling, he's, he's taking a jacket and putting in an enclosed SUV where he's basically driving for X period of time. So any material that he's bringing in with him, he continues to breathe and it continues to recycle within the cabin. The other functionality component is he's currently carrying testing equipment, inspection equipment, fire gear that does not fit or transport easily in and out of the vehicle, which means it either gets damaged or the vehicle gets damaged. So this is an opportunity to not only right-size the vehicle, but also reduce potential exposure to safety hazards, and it provides, it's a shuffled vehicle, in other words, it's going to move down the line. So in terms of usability or recyclability, it's a, it's a good opportunity. I think the vehicle that's being used right now by the custodial supervisor has a solar attachment to keep the battery charged, because no matter what they do in terms of the alternator or the battery, it will not retain a charge, it has sparking issues, it's-
It was a, it was a hand-me-down from the police department when we tried to get the custodial manager some type of a vehicle, in part because, just quickly, the custodial manager, because he's on the road so often, we really prefer that he is performing town business utilizing a town vehicle for insurance and other purposes. And so the vehicle that was available was one through the police department. However, that vehicle, again, should, really should be sold at auction. We've had numerous problems with it where I've gone and rescued the custodial manager at many a school just because it, it dies.
And so that vehicle will be going to auction?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question.
Okay.
The, the way the bids are listed, the trucks are separate? Are we voting one or each separately?
I believe the motion was to purchase both vehicles.
Do I have to support both or both of this?
That's right. This is a purchase for both vehicles. Any other council comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Any abstentions? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item, we have no ordinances, resolutions, or appointments for introduction, so we will move to the minutes of the July 15 regular meeting. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve minutes of July 15, 2019, regular meeting.
Okay. Motion in a second. Are there any changes, corrections to these minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. That brings us back to public comment. Members of the public have five minutes to speak on any matter. Please state your name and address for the record. Is there anybody who'd like to speak tonight? Mr. Colantonio?
Good evening again, Gus Colantonio, 16 Morrison Avenue. I, I guess it's sad, upsetting and everything else when, when we are told all kinds of things. Personally, I have to admire that the people that voted, yeah, I have to admire the people that voted against that, not because we don't need trucks or not because we don't really care about Weathersfield, but I think sometimes we've gotta question it, says where all this money goes. You know, tonight, I guess, you know, the budget was a little bit under, there is some money left over, instead of putting it in next year or whatever it is, no, let's find a way to spend it. Fine. Is there any accountability in government? Personally, I don't think so. Only few do care. I heard about the, the truck tonight, and it's washed sometimes twice. I have a truck, 1999, and the only time I wash it, it's when it rains. And, and to my knowledge, I believe that I, I drive in Weathersfield, the same roads that they are salted. Is it a little bit, you know, rusted? Yeah, it is. My wife is always after me, says, "Buy a new truck." Says, "No, it's still working." It's, it's working. I mean, you know, every time, I love to see the town cutting the trees because, you know, they cut it nice, you know, in the trunk, 16 inches, and I go with my old truck and pick up the wood, go home and exercise a little bit instead of going to the golf course, you know? I exercise in my backyard. I'm just saying that when, when we try to do something right here and it doesn't really come from our pockets, I think we overspend no matter what. 41,000 miles, I got 160,000 miles on my truck. The town truck gets washed sometimes twice a day when there is a storm. Mine gets washed only when it rains. And I'm, I know, I, I'm not out here to impress anybody. I drive my truck around and it meets my standards. Now, I don't even know how much this truck costs, but basically, you know, 10, 12 years lifetime, and 100,000 or more, it's a lot of money. I think with that money, you can fix it whenever you need to. Going back to Morrison Avenue, and I just have to repeat this myself, that basically for the new town manager, that even though I've been saying this for 10 years, he may not know, although I, I mentioned to him during the meeting, that before 1955, Morrison Avenue did not connect to Silas Dean. Morrison Avenue- Morrison Avenue when they built it was completely different than any other streets. And now it's worse than Hillcrest Avenue. Now we have twice as many cars at Hillcrest Avenue, I wonder why? No, I do not wonder why, I know why. And all those trucks from Lamour, every day, every day, three or four times. The flat beds, whatever they call it, they are very noisy and the decibel, it's high. I watch TV on the, in the living room, it's, it's in the front of the house. When those trucks go by, forget it. It's, it's ridiculous and yet it's been over ten years. And let me say it again, for the town manager. The intersection of Hillcrest and Orchard has three stop signs. It meets all the intersectional side distance. Hillcrest Avenue has only one, one intersection there. Morrison Avenue, we have two. And again, it used to meet some standards. Now it does not, based on the design that the previous administrations, the previous town engineer and the previous town manager did it under their watch. Now, a lot of times when we talk about it, says, "Well, that was done before." It doesn't really matter when it was done. There is something wrong with the street and something needs to be done. Because it doesn't really matter if you're going to realign the, the street, the curb line, you're going to move it, okay? I'm going to be here until things are going to be fair, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colantonio, anyone else was, uh, wishing to speak tonight? Mr. Young?
Good evening again, Robert Young, twenty Copper Mill Road. With the closing of the Keisha Farm, I've been waiting a long time for the appraisal, Mayor. Will I be getting that tomorrow morning in my email? And will you be posting it on your website so everybody can see it? You do know that fifty, hold on. You do know that five thousand two hundred and eighty-four people voted against the purchase of the Keisha Farm. Those, a lot of those people are waiting to see that appraisal. A lot of those people are mad. A lot of those people hopefully won't vote for any of you people. You're not worthy of a vote, not one, I don't care how big your head is, how blown up your head is. No vote for any of you. You're not worth it. You have screwed the citizens of this town, left and right. You took our rights away when you refused to put out that appraisal before the referendum back on, back in November. We had no idea how good, bad the price was. We had no appraisal to work with. I've been sending you properties for quite a while that show that property's not selling well, property price is poor. You go to Glastonbury, they're fifteen, twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars an acre. I just sent you one last night. I'm sure you all got that on the Idle Hour Farm down in Middletown. And I'm sure you all went and looked at it, I hope you did. That was one beautiful piece of property with big barns, horse stalls. It was a, it was like a, a millionaire's mansion for horses. Sold for one million, three hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. That's twenty-five acres. That was, when you figure per acre with those gorgeous buildings and the layout, they were paying, whoever bought it paid fifty-five thousand dollars an acre. You folks have gone on contract and lied to us and did not provide an appraisal to us. Matter of fact, you didn't even give us what the costs were going to be going out. And you snookered the citizens left and right. Fifty-two hundred of them didn't trust you. And I hope those fifty-two hundred people come out and vote this year for Tom Mazarella, who supported the need for an appraisal for this property. And he opposed the purchase of it, just like those other five thousand two hundred and eighty-four people. I'm sure out of the six hundred, six thousand, six hundred and fifty-five who did vote for it, they're going to probably realize in a short while how snookered they were. And I hope they come out and vote for Tom Mazarella for town council. Did we all see him tonight up here talk about that dump truck or that truck for the, uh, Fire Marshal? Didn't he do a great job? Isn't that what the truck was all about? He talked about the lift, he talked about the truck and not to buy it. And you folks went right ahead, you're going to buy it or get it. We don't need that. We don't need it. I hope those fifty-two hundred and eighty-four people come out and vote for one person in this election. I also hope the six thousand, six hundred and fifty-one other people who voted for the Keisha Farm realize they've been snookered. They've been snookered badly and they're now going to be paying for the next, what, twenty years, twenty years? On, 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 on the bond? And all the improvements, all the insurance, all, all this interest? I know you snicker, Mr. Lesser, you're part of all of that. You held back that information. And then, of course, you're all running for, a number of you are running for election. And what's the mayor talk about? Oh, she got fracking through. Who cares about fracking? It's not done in this state. But oh, that's a big accomplishment. You also got LED lights. Just go back and look at the schedule for the payments for LED lights or streetlights. We're paying three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars a year for the next six, seven years? And that's because of every one of these people, they all voted for it.
Wrap it up, sir.
Time and time again, they voted for these things. There's fire engines, there's dump trucks, all kinds of things are on time payments that are not going to go away. And that's what's going to make our town so expensive going out. We lost, we lost on that mill rate issue this year with, uh, revaluation. We lost bad time and now we're behind the eight ball, huge time. I'll be back, Mayor, you know I will.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak this evening?
We gotta have one vote. And, and that Idle Hour Farm was a nice farm.
Hey, Mr. Mazarella, you'd like to speak?
Tom Mazarella, six hundred Walton Hill Road. Bob's not my campaign manager, but I'm going to take the, I'm going to take the one vote, so. I was pretty disappointed in the responses that you heard on the truck maintenance. I think, uh, I'm going to go back and look at the video. But the way I heard it, we heard at one point that the truck was the, the fiscal services truck, not the Fire Marshal's truck. We heard that it was used every day constantly. Then we also heard, or at least I heard, that it hasn't been being used very much because they're not sure if it's going to make it back to the, to the garage. So what is it? One or the other? I don't think everybody needs to be an expert in each, in every facet of fiscal services operation. But if you don't know something, you go out and you get some help and you get, you ask questions and, and you compile that all and then make a sound decision on that. We heard about the driveshaft being corroded. So go out, buy a new driveshaft, you're talking about a hundred dollars or two hundred dollars. We heard about, we can't buy the parts locally. This is a worldwide economy that we're in, you, you use this company called FedEx or UPS. I, I was in the aircraft industry. We would buy parts all over the world and have them in our possession in a day or two days because a multimillion-dollar aircraft was sitting on the ground, not making any money. You can buy brake components, differentials, driveshafts, and have them in all Weathersfield the next day. And if you need some help doing that, I'd be glad to show people how that works, okay? To sit here and listen to some of the nonsense that you heard tonight, it's, it's insulting. And I don't think it's right that we have a department head that's controlling one of the largest budgets in the town budget. I believe it's the schools, Board of Ed, and then fiscal services. Police are in there somewheres, but, I mean, come on. And then, to top it off, the Fire Marshal's vehicle has a legitimate reason for replacement that the town manager spoke about, the health of one of our town employees. He's got carcinogenic debris on his fire gear and he's putting it in his backseat, breathing it all on the way back to his home or to his office. Okay, that's, that's a separate issue from a dump truck or a pickup truck or whatever we're talking about. I'm talking about something that's ten years old and it's expired, it's exceeded its useful life? That is absolute nonsense, nonsense. Go down to Anderson Farms, guy's been in business for hundred, couple hundred years, right? They have trucks that are in the nineteen thirties and they use them every day. They're on the road, they're registered, the mechanics maintain them. I mean, he doesn't go out and buy a brand-new truck every year or every ten years. You know, the costs are just not being represented properly. And I didn't hear anything about how much money the town has spent on that, maintaining that dump truck, that pickup truck. I didn't hear any facts that said it's been off the road X amount of days. Heard none of that. Okay, enough said, blood pressure's going up. I wanted to clear up one item about the Keisha Farms, that Miss, comment that Mr. Young made. It focuses on the word transparency, okay? Some people in town wanted to see the appraisals that were done on the farm. FOI says you don't have to release an appraisal during an ongoing transaction. They don't say you can't release it, they say you don't have to. And the, I believe the public was misled when someone, or some department, decided to release an inaccurate appraisal of two point four million dollars. When the real appraisal that the town paid for with taxpayer money was for a million dollars less. And I think those sixty-five hundred people that voted for that farm might have a different opinion, at least some of them, I'll wrap it up. Some of them might have a different opinion on whether to buy that property when they found out that we were paying a million dollars more than it was appraised for. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak this evening? Anybody else who'd like to speak? Okay, seeing no one, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries, thank you and have a good night.